And electronic devices. Mr. Lindy, please lead us in the pledge. Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates. President.
Ms. Bolton.
President.
Mrs. Bowers here. Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Murawski?
Here.
President Jones?
Here.
Members of the public who wish to speak may do so by clicking the chat button now. The chat feature will be open for your request for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. Okay, I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting March 15, 2021, the business meeting March 15, 2021, and the special public joint meeting of the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee and Health and Safety Committee, March 18, 2021.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes are approved. Okay, we're at committee reports. I'm going to ask each committee person to please limit your comments to five minutes. Ms. Bates, please present the March 15 Health and Safety Committee meeting.
Yes, thank you. We led the meeting with a report from our governmental liaisons, Mr. George Glover and Mr. Eric Kearney, and that report should be attached to the meeting minutes. The action that was determined is that Mr. Kearney would contact the administration regarding testimony regarding some three of the House bills, since they were have been in close contact, and the administration would make the determination if it was appropriate. We received our update on nutrition, which was pretty amazing. One thing that I it's not really in the minutes, but it's it's really of note that Cincinnati Public Schools, when when we were in the throes of the pandemic and were making millions of dollars of food purchases for our students to be distributed at the schools for pickup, that most a large, large part of that was from local Ohio farmers and vendors. So Cincinnati Public played a big role in keeping like the restaurant industry alive and moving because we were able to use their vendors for our students' needs, which is a pretty amazing thing that we were able to do. And, you know, literally millions of dollars went into the local economy from Cincinnati Public to make sure that our children had the nutrition that they that they needed and the distribution. We also discussed the code of conduct, and it was really our first report of this Health and Safety Committee to receive discipline data, which was very interesting. It was very different than we're used to because it's a pandemic, you know, so there aren't as many discipline problems. The highest incidence was cheating and plagiarism, which has never been. That was that was very interesting. Not much fighting, you know, because the children aren't together, and then the disaggregation according to demographics. So we will be receiving this on a quarterly basis, and we will be asking or developing a way to have feedback from community groups regarding this this data in an organized way so that process will be developed. really, that was that was the gist of it. We oh, the big actually, not the gist of it, this is kind of big, that we requested, actually, it was Mr. Messer requested creating having the administration create a work plan on the current and future state of the SROs and what the anticipated path forward is. So the board will know what the plan is, what it has been, and what we're looking forward to with the plan as as a way for the board to be informed and the public to be informed. And, you know, actually, kind of a discussion point as well. So I present these minutes for acceptance.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bates. Mr. Murawski, please present the March 25 Policy and Equity Committee meeting report.
With pleasure. Thank you, President Jones. The Policy and Equity Committee met on Thursday, March 25 at 9:00 a.m. via Blue Jeans. The first thing we heard was from our friend Ralph Erhardt of the Cincinnati Chamber Orchestra asking for an alcohol waiver if it is possible to have their event at the School for Creative and Performing Arts where they normally have it. At this point, they're ready to have it outside, but he wanted us to be ready in case they were going able to have it inside, so we don't have anything for you tonight. But we did decide as a committee that we agreed, and if the situation changes, making indoor venue allowed summer music 2021, we will then move a waiver in front of the board at that time. So he was kind of crossing his Ts. Circle tail, sort of facility dog conversation. I had it on the agenda for follow-up if members wanted any, and they didn't. So we moved on. Not to say the conversation is ended, there just wasn't any need to discuss it at that meeting. We had continued discussion about board policies for board versus administration on that list that we presented last time that was adopted as part of the work plan. You can see it is included again here on page two in its entirety. And Ms. Bolton and I agreed that some more attention should be paid to a specific one. Help me out, Ms. Bolton, the one about the parents, the federal mandate. Family engagement. It's interesting, and I would encourage my colleagues, too, that the federal policy for family engagement is really like if we were to follow it to the letter, is kind of the community engagement plan. I don't think any of us were really aware of how intensely robust it is, just tough to put out there. So we continued those conversations, and it was made noted that under Superintendent Mitchell, there has been a lot of improvement regarding what our policies are and making, you know, the broader staff in the community aware of what they are. The kudos to the superintendent. This is why Ms. Bolton believes it's important to define the board work versus the philosophy in order for the board to stay bigger picture, help the district move forward, particularly in this time of reimagining, you know, what is the future of CPS. OPEZ, the Ohio Principal Evaluation System. Ms. Bolton is on the Educator Standards Board, and they have worked on the Ohio Principal Evaluation System for a number of years, and it is ready to be approved. If the state board approves it, districts can volunteer to enter OPEZ next year. We already adopted OTEZ 2.0. We are looking for direction from the administration to see if they think it's a good idea to also be a part of OPEZ, in which case we will then present a resolution to the board saying that we adopt it. General Counsel Hoying has begun drafting that policy in anticipation of, you know, if the administration comes and says that OPEZ seems like a good idea. Interestingly, it kind of works in tandem with OTEZ 2.0, which we are we adopted a few meetings ago. Policy 7100 Facilities Planning, this was put on the agenda. Mr. Lindy, you may recall, wanted to have a conversation about responsible bidder, and we did. We realized that Policy 7100 is probably not necessarily where the conversation needs to happen, so the action we took was agreeing that the administration's recommended revisions for 7100, as well as Ms. Bolton's recommendation, add accessible to the first paragraph, but that we are going to look at our purchasing and responsible bidder policies at the next committee meeting on April 29, 2021, and see, A, what kind of language could be added to strengthen those policies, but then, B, where they might be able to sort of connect instead of having like three different ones where you got to go look for them, just kind of have one, make it easier on everybody. Review our policies, 7420 Hygienic Management, we will vote to approve that tonight. Policy 7430 Risk Reduction Program, we will vote on that tonight. Ms. Bolton wanted to ensure that the language was strong enough. It is has what is required by Ohio Revised Code, but as Ms. Bolton noted, we have taken a lot of steps to make sure that our risk reduction program is robust. We want to make it strong to reflect that. Use of Tobacco Policy, we added students and staff and visitors and parents to the policy before it was just students and staff. We'll recommend that for approval tonight. Plant Security also recommend for approval tonight. And then I had given an assignment to General Counsel Hoying about religious groups using our schools' names without our permission, and he is going to follow up with those schools' parent church groups to see if they even have groups in their schools. It might be a moot point, in which case we would ask them to remove them, and my time is up. Five minutes.
You made it. Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments about the report? Okay, thank you, Ms. Bolton, the March 25 Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee report.
Yes, first of all, I want to thank administration, particularly, obviously, the treasurer, and also our tech folks, because this as well as the membership of the Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee, because we've actually had to have, I think, three meetings in this past month. The one that we had to have this time was a special meeting caused because the treasurer made the case that the committee probably should meet and talk about some development regarding our what we what we commonly call the COPS, which are certificates of participation, because our experts that help us with that had discovered, indeed, there was a mistake in one of the marketing documents, and indeed, it would make some difference for the market, and also there may have been need for additional transparency. So we did convene, and I appreciate our members being able to be there on on the short notice. We were briefed by David Conley, who is the president of Rock Mill Financial Consulting, and also Brenda Wiener, who is a partner at Dinsmore. Those are our two experts besides our treasurer, and they presented the issue and the problem. We discussed the risk, we discussed what to do, discussed the need for transparency. And so they presented three options, the members of the committee. While we do not vote, did feel that one of the options was one that we could be most comfortable with, and we also found, based upon the resolution that had passed previously, it required no additional board action. I appreciate the president helping us through that as we went through what can we do and what can we have to do. So it was determined to come up with a particular option that offered the most transparency and the least risk, and a somewhat of a reduced savings, but still a savings to the district. I submit and hope for approval.
Thank you. Do board members have questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion to approve the committee reports.
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. The minutes are approved as presented. All right, so we're ready for our first presentation. Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes, so as with all of our board meetings, we want to be able to make our presentations under the strategic plan goals, and so we have Assistant Superintendent Susan Bunty, who will be providing post-secondary transitions for our students who have disabilities. A lot of times you hear us talk about the transitions that we have as relates to our three Es for our general ed or typical students, but tonight you're going to hear about our students with disabilities, and we're very excited about that. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On behalf of the Department of Student Services, we thank you for this opportunity. Under the leadership of Assistant Superintendent Murphy, our district has accomplished amazing results within our three E pathways. DSS has worked closely with our colleagues in this arena, and we are thrilled to partner with this with them in this endeavor. For some learners, though, whether they be newcomers to the United States or students who may have complex disabilities, more support is necessary. Tonight, we're going to share with you some of the strategies that are helping all of our students to be successful. The folks who are listed on this slide are the members of Student Services who comprise our transition team. They are behind me and will be presenting to you all this evening. As always, our North Star is our our strategic plan is our North Star. We're focused specifically on student-centered decision-making tonight, and without further ado, Lisa Voss, one of our Student Services managers, will begin by telling us about the mission of this work.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The district strategic plan is the foundation for our work. We continue to grow our transition programs, and through this work, we're committed to involving and engaging our stakeholders to prepare students. CPS is committed to promoting equal post-secondary opportunities for the students with disabilities by supporting them, and we are dedicated to providing opportunities and experiences that address the post-secondary IEP goals of students, to reach their potential for post-secondary education and training, to obtain meaningful employment, and to live independently. In the next three years, we will build a transition program that becomes a model for other districts while we meet the needs of all of our students with disabilities and our English language learners. Through our work, we have reduced the number of students who extend their high school education past four years for transition purposes. As you can see, the number of students who need additional transition services has decreased over the last several years. Thank you. Next up is Michael Workman.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for giving us the opportunity to highlight some of our work. We have been working diligently to increase our job training coordination, our JTC program within CPS. As you can see, if you take a look at the slide, from the 1920 school year to the 2021 school year, we have made some additions or additions. We have added two Project Life classrooms to our district, one at West High and one at Wilbur High School. Project Life has allowed us to repurpose two of our specialized units without having to create new positions. Project Life gives students in their junior and senior years the opportunity to work on their employability skills that include those self-skills that they really need to become employable. For half of their day, they focus on academic requirements, while the other half is spent on being interns within within a district. One of our goals for the 2223 school year is to repurpose two additional units and create two more Project Life classrooms. In the fall of 1920, this team worked on three grants. To date, we have been awarded close to a quarter of a million dollars. To speak more about that grant work, I would like to introduce Shaquisha Oberfroth.
Good evening. Moving our transition work forward with the grant funds has allowed us to host parent monthly meetings called Tool Talks, which stands for Transition, Opportunities, and Options for Life. It has been held the first Thursday of each month. We have distributed welcome folders to parents with information on the transition process for their students meeting their post-secondary goals. We are preparing to launch our Parent University of informational sessions the first two weeks of May. In addition, we are in the process of creating a post-secondary transition website. These initiatives are to keep our families informed, involved, and ultimately empowered in the post-secondary transition process for their student. We are enhancing our interdepartment collaboration with career technical education, career-based learning, college and career readiness, the Office of Second Language Acquisition, dining services, and facilities. Our team is building partnerships with multiple community businesses and agencies that consist of Hamilton County Department of Developmental Services, Opportunities for Ohioans with Disabilities, Easter Seals, Butler Tech for our Project Life programs, Children's Hospital and Hamilton County Government Offices for our Project Search program, the University of Cincinnati Office of Accessibility Resources, Cincinnati State, State Support Team 13 with Hamilton County Education Service Center, the Cincinnati Police Department, the Cincinnati Recreation Center, and locally with community businesses for our ICAM programs. We're building our capacity by participating in the Area Transition Coordinator meetings hosted by Warren County, Southwestern Ohio Regional Autism Advisory Council meetings, and the Career Technical Education and Special Education Network meetings. Thank you. And next, we have Dr. Lisa Freymer.
Good evening. We are so proud of our work with Career Technical Education and the Office of Second Language Acquisition. We wrote the equity for each grant because we saw that our English learners weren't earning their career tech credentials at the same rate as their peers. This grant supports English learners' employment in high-demand, high-wage careers by by allowing them opportunities to earn the appropriate credentials and passing the web SAM. Through this grant, we have provided parent information sessions on career tech and the programs Cincinnati Public offers. We have developed resource classes to support English learners' understanding of the career tech curriculum. We're in the process of creating career tech videos in multiple languages. We've provided staff professional development on culturally responsive practices, and we have partnered with Cincinnati State to help English learners further their education and gain employment in what's considered in-demand, high-salary jobs. What other high school students choose to attend, we want them to have equitable post-secondary transition services and supports. We are working with our building teams to develop a systematic process to provide a variety of opportunities that meet individual needs of each student that they achieve through their post-second so that they achieve their post-secondary goals. Right now, we would like to show you a short video. We would like to put our words into actions by showing you a short video on one of our transition programs. This is the ICAM program at West High.
We want to say thank you to all of us, all of you, for letting us come to present this amazing work that the transition team has done in collaboration also with the school teams that they support. You got just a little bit to see of some of the activities that our students do. You may have noticed some in-school activities that we put in place with COVID, so working with student dining services and with our building engineers and custodial staff. At this time, if you guys have any questions, please let us know. I'm sure someone on the team will be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. Want to open it up for questions or comments. Ms. Bowers?
Yes. Hey, Mr. Workman. How you doing? Thank you. Thank you, guys, for the presentation. I I am very intrigued by all of this, and I like Assistant Superintendent Bunty, you know, that I am very intrigued by all of this. The JTC program with the Project Life, is that what it's up under? Do you have any data on sustainability from 1920 as far as those kids? I mean, I know that's a new program, but even the ICAM program, do we have any data on students that were able to get employment and have sustained employment leaving our programs?
Yes, we do. We have. Each year, through our high department of ed, we have to do a report on the sustainability of jobs, the number of years our students have maintained competitive employment, and we look for competitive employment. So this is employment that a peer their same age could go out and get, and they're still held to the same high standards that their peers are held to. So yes, we don't have the data. I don't know it off the top of my head, but but they are, they do sustain. You know, we have students that have been working five years, six, seven years at the county offices, at the sheriff's office. We have people who work for DHL, the Fifth Third Bank, so we have a lot of students who have maintained, used our transition programs as pipelines into businesses, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All righty. Well, thank you again for the presentation. We look forward, and and it was a pleasure to see the kids, the young people, actually on their job sites. So that's exciting. Glad to hear that things are going well. We look forward to the next presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. The next presentation?
Yes, and I do want to highlight this work and just say, for those of you who watched the video at home, if you did see the little little message at the bottom, some of those shots were pre-COVID, and so that's why in some scenes you didn't see a person with a mask on.
Right.
Just want to make sure that everyone knows that, especially as we go into our health and safety updates. So I'm going to invite our Chief Strategy Officer, Sarah Trimble Oliver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So last Wednesday was a tremendous day for CPS. We welcomed our students back to five days a week in-person learning after a full year of blended learning and distance learning. So we just want to say a huge thank you to the frontline staff and the teachers and principals that got us ready for that Wednesday. All of the furniture was returned to the classroom and cleaned. The individual meal plans were planned with each school individually to allow for the safest lunch possible when masks are not being worn. The 1,200 Group A and Group B bus routes were merged and updated cards sent to families, and all of the cleaning supplies were replenished. There was a significant communication effort, of course, for this five-day in-person option for both families and staff, and you see those communication methods shown on the slide. The schools also sent home learning preference forms to give families to get feedback from families on whether their choice is five-day in-person or distance learning for the rest of this year, and now forms are going out for learning preferences for the fall. And we are asking for those forms to be returned for high school by April 16 and elementary by April 30, so that planning can continue for next fall. Walnut Hills also had a huge week last week for their first return to in-person learning. A parent town hall was held on the evening of March 18, and more than 650 parents and more than 650 parents attended that virtual town hall. And as I mentioned last Wednesday, the students' in-person learning began phasing in with grades seven through nine, and then tomorrow adding in grades 10 through 12. They also began their concurrent learning pilot. The technology was installed, and the training was conducted, and the ITM team was onsite last week to support teachers as they are learning that new technology for being able to provide instruction to distance-learning students and in-person students synchronously. Combining all grades at Walnut Hills, over 2,100 students are choosing in-person learning, which is about 78%. For attendance last week, for students for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and now, this is only the students that chose in-person attendance. The distance-learning attendance is still being tabulated, as is shown on the slide. And then, for staff for Wednesday through Friday cumulatively, 92% for certificated and 88% for civil service. We also had 150 employees from the Ed Center and Iowa Street out in the schools last week, just to lend extra pair of hands, especially in regarding to the lunch plans. And so, also monitoring hallways to make sure that the return of students, that we are still maintaining social distancing as much as possible. And now, to give us a principal's perspective and insight into the return to in-person learning, we have the honor to hear from two super school leaders, Angel Roddy from Mount Airy. And then, following Angel, we'll have Taylor Porter from Gamble High, who will just jump right in, right after Angel.
Good evening, board members, Laura, and members of PLT. I'm Angel Roddy, Principal of Mount Airy School. Go Tigers! I want to thank you for inviting me to share my perspectives on what last week was like inviting all of our kids back. In short, it was awesome. It was so amazing to see our kids back in the building. The building felt alive again. There was kids chattering. There was laughter. The teachers were happy. Now, I'm not going to say that there were not challenges, because there were. This has been a very challenging year, and challenges have become pretty par for the course. But we were meeting them one-on-one, working as a team, modifying and adjusting. So, we're getting through it. It's not easy, but we're getting through it, and it's well worth it, the R kids. I'm sure you know, safety is job one. We are working diligently to ensure that we are following all of our safety precautions. Our students and staff are socially distanced. Everybody's wearing a mask. We're sanitizing regularly and disinfecting surfaces like we never have before. So, safety is job one, and we're working really hard. The kids have been fabulous about wearing their masks. That was one thing that was extremely shocking. They want to be in school, and they know that that's one of the things they have to do, so they're working really hard at that. The teachers are working hard to make sure that the desks are far apart. Were we imagining what the classroom looked like? We're so used to symmetry and groups that we're having to do a lot of different things. We're moving desks to the edges of the room where we've never had before. So, we're doing a lot of things we haven't done before, because we're in a situation we've never been before. We want to thank Jessica Shelley and Dining Services, because what they've done for lunches has been great. Putting the lunches in a takeout container so that kids can move about the campus carrying it without dropping anything or causing a lot of messes has been a huge help for us. And having central office reps there last week to help with lunches was a tremendous asset. We were lucky enough to have Susan and Fran from Communications, Leslie from Customer Care, and Kiara from Transportation. We even had a visit from Jen on the first day of school to come say hi and bring us donuts, which we greatly appreciated. A lot of us did. So, I'm going to try and beat Mike with less than five minutes. So, I'm going to just say thank you, and we'll keep fighting the good fight.
Alright. Good evening. I hope my audio is okay. Good evening, and thank you to all of our board members, to our superintendent, the entire PLT. I really just want to take one minute to echo everything I just heard from my colleague, Ms. Roddy. Number one for me is just, I am so grateful to be here and alive. This has been a personally challenging year for me, and I know all of you have had personal challenges as well. So, we've also experienced professional challenges, and I'm just really grateful for the team from the district to the building level that's really found a creative way to get our kids back in the building and to do it safely. And so, I just want to take a second to say thank you to some of the greatest staff members in the city, the facilities team, my custodians, especially my security team, who have clearly gone above and beyond the job description here at Gamble Montessori. And so, thank you so much to my security staff, and, you know, really the front lines and who gets the phone calls, my clerks, my senior supports, my lead secretary. There's just so many people that are doing tremendous work to make sure we can get our kids back in the building. And so, absolutely, our building felt alive last week, and our students were happy, our teachers were happy. And we decided to take a pulse check at the end of every day with our teachers to look for one thing that was executed really well throughout the day, and one thing that can get better for the next day or the upcoming day. And so, we ran that all three days last week and got really good feedback in order to make the appropriate tweaks on a weekly basis. And so, I'm really grateful to be here personally and professionally. Students are back, and that is a great thing for all of us. And I think the challenge of COVID and reopening schools has actually presented quite a few opportunities to do our work more creatively and more efficiently. And so, I'm thankful to be here, and I'll take less than five minutes and turn it back over to you, Ms. Sarah Trimble Oliver.
Thank you, Angel and Taylor. Thanks for joining us. Alright, so at this point, we will turn over to our normal review of the school measures and community measures for COVID. So, we'll bring that slide back up. Oh, I got it. Thank you. Alright, so for our school measures, our in-school transmissions is at 29, and that is out of a denominator of the 608 total student positive cases currently. Our implementation of safety protocols last week was at 98.2%. And the number of classes that are on distance learning is one. And just a little explanation, if there is a multiple positive cases or and/or multiple close contacts in a particular class is when that class would be put on distance learning for safety reasons. Student positive cases, 608. Staff positive cases, 584. And there, you see the staff attendance for last Thursday when this snapshot was taken. For the community trends in Hamilton County, 17 new student cases for the week prior to April 1st, and two new staff cases in the public schools in Hamilton County. For our city daily new cases, we are at 13.9 daily new cases per 100,000. And so, you can see on that graph, that bottom graph, that long tail of pretty much flat daily new cases per 100,000 for the city since about the beginning of March. Seven of the last 14 days are decreasing in the daily new cases. Our positivity rate has decreased just slightly, 3.5% for the city and 3.9% for the county outside of the city. And our final piece of data is the average length to get positive test results is about one day for the city. And that concludes the health and safety presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Mr. Morosky?
Thank you, Ms. Trimble Oliver. It's good to hear from the principals, too. I'm glad everyone seems to be enjoying themselves at the schools, and I certainly have heard that, too, from other schools around the district. Obviously, we hear other issues as well. And I'm curious if you could elaborate on the lunches. I know I've asked a lot about the lunches, but in places, are there any things that we could be doing aside from extra personnel, which sounds like an awesome idea? And according to Ms. Roddy, it was an awesome idea, so that's great. Jessica Shelley, unsurprisingly, is making it possible to carry your lunches around. So, do you feel like all the schools across the board are able to do the lunch thing safely? Or are there other things we might be able to do to help?
Yes, so we put significant effort and continue to put significant effort into lunches, because, you know, as we've learned this year, the masks are very effective in the classroom setting. And so, now we have to pay special attention to the time when masks are off while the kids are eating. And so, we have approached this with each individual school to say, what will it take to get your students at the six-foot distancing during the time their masks are off? And so, we're doing that in a variety of ways, using the cafeteria and other areas so that students can spread out. And to do that, it does take additional staff to monitor those areas. And so, we're doing that with a combination of some contracted external resources, which Paul McDoyle is orchestrating, as well as, in some cases, paying teachers to do lunch, duty lunch, paying them additional time for doing duty at lunch. In some cases, we also had to provide additional furniture for the schools to make it work when they're having lunch in other areas other than the cafeteria.
I think that's great, and I'm glad you elaborated on that. That's a lot of extra time and effort to make sure that's going well, so I appreciate that. I'm sure a lot of people appreciate that. Just a couple other, they're pretty quick, I think. So, I had inquired a while ago, I'm curious, and if not, it's totally fine, but about are schools serving as sites for anyone 16 and up to get vaccinated? Are we talking, and if we're not, or maybe it's something to think about. Like, I know we have this awesome relationship with the Cincinnati Health Department, and we've been doing great with all our nurses and everything like this. So, yeah.
Yes, I believe Ms. Bunty is making her way up.
She would not be coming if there was not a response to that question, other than no.
Good evening. Thank you for that question. So, our continued relationship with the Cincinnati Health Department. We are moving forward with vaccinations for our 16-year-olds. A survey is being sent out to our families to gauge interest this week. And then, with unlike vaccinations for adults, we only can use the Pfizer vaccine for our students. It's the only one that's been approved. And so, there's a little bit of a technical aspect to that. So, we have to be very sure how many students would participate, and then, CHD has to be able to order that certain amount of vaccine when it's made available by the state. So, the plan is definitely moving forward, but there are some additional opportunities for us to be able to get it exact.
That's great. Appreciate it. And then, lastly, and I guess this is for the superintendent, and maybe it will come later, but at the last minute, given an assignment regarding our criteria to close, just in case. And of course, with the CDC's director's recent off-script speech, and I'm sure we all heard, of impending doom. Ideally, that will not happen in Cincinnati, but it made me more interested in knowing what that criteria might be, particularly since we have a resolution tonight committing to five days of instruction.
So, I'm going to ask Sarah Trimble Oliver to come forward. We have looked at and continue to look at the positivity rate, as well as the cases per 100,000, in addition to looking at our transmissions within our schools. And we believe that the 30 and below is a safe area per 100,000 that would allow our students to be in session.
Yes, and so what I would add to that, and our regional health advisors have recently updated their COVID measures to inform school planning report, which still advises that school measures be taken into consideration first before community measures. And so, what I would offer for consideration is that our school measures, meaning in-school transmissions, number of classrooms that are closed due to, you know, positive cases, as well as staff attendance, be considered our criteria primarily. And then, community rates can also be considered. And as Ms. Mitchell mentioned, we learned from the fall and winter period that when daily new cases are around 30 to 40, really upwards of 40, is when our staff attendance begins affecting our safety protocols.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I think that makes a ton of sense, and I think that's great. And I'm just wondering, like, how we can maybe codify that? And I don't know if that, you know, superintendent's recommendation in our report or a resolution in this board, but just to kind of codify that, because I think that's smart, and I think that makes sense. But I don't want it to just die with this interaction, you know what I mean? So, I don't know if you...
Absolutely, Sarah. Can we bring back to you a one-pager that outlines for your consideration for approval?
Absolutely. And just to have on hand, I think it's awesome. I appreciate it, y'all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, thank you, Sarah. I have a couple of questions. The first one, do you have a number for the amount of students who came to school last week in person for the overall district?
I believe, and team, help me.
I do. I have it right here. So, for April the 2nd, which is Friday, is that right? We had 22,774 students in school. That was our attendance for Friday. Unfortunately, I didn't bring the other days with me, but we do have that. So, I can send you the report that shows it breaks it down by school, so you could see the actual number of students who were in session compared to the projection in terms of the number of students who are enrolled in the school. Thank you. The second question, Sarah, is there any clear criteria? I know we've spoken about this regarding athletes and positive cases. And is there any clarity on how that works? As far as, like, the difference between 14-day versus the no-direct contact? Or, I mean, it's not really clear, I think.
For the quarantine for a team?
Yes.
Yes, I'm going to ask Susan if she doesn't mind coming back up. Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Bunty did clarify, we're still doing the 14-day quarantine for students, and that really falls under Cynthia Gollumia's realm.
The other thing that I would like to just add, I happened to see on the news last week, at the bottom of the picture was a caption that says something about confirmed cases at Wanted Hills High School. This is to be expected, and if you recall, I don't remember the number off the top of my head right now, but when Wanted Hills wasn't in session, there were a number of cases of kids who are confirmed positive that were reported. And so, again, we know, it's not even that we believe, we know our schools are safe. As we invite more students to come back, we know that our positivity rate will go up within our schools, but we have mechanisms in place to be able to address those concerns.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Are quarantines within the new CDC guidelines? And do we have protocols in place for children? And I know this was a specific question from a family who were in the trial and did receive the vaccine and are fully vaccinated.
Yes, so I'll try to answer, and then Susan, you tell me if I answer anything incorrectly. Okay, so, we are still quarantining students who are close contacts. However, vaccinated individuals, both adults and students, if they're fully vaccinated, meaning two weeks after the last dose, they would not need to quarantine.
But that's, we're quarantining for 14 days, but that's not in sync with the new CDC guidelines, correct? And why are we doing that?
So, about two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, when we started talking about our return to school, the 7:30 a.m. huddle team, which you've heard a lot about, made a decision for two weeks, we would watch the data about our students' return to school, and out of an abundance of caution, to make sure that all of our safety protocols were...
And out of an abundance of caution, to make sure that all of our safety protocols were in place, while we increased and doubled the size of our students' return to school. We have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, again, at 7:30, to talk about looking at that quarantine guidance, and then a possible change recommendation to our performance leadership and then our board, based on the data that we review from our days that we've been back in school.
So we have been encouraged by the state to work very closely with our local health department, and, and so we need to be able to have a nod of support with our local health department to move away from the quarantine guidelines. Is that correct? And we will have additional information later this week from our local health department. Wednesday, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bolton?
Oh, thank you. Thanks for the report, and thanks for everybody doing what they're doing. I appreciate the selection of those two schools, too. I'm a huge fan of those two schools, particularly, and those principals. They've just done a great job. I have to follow up on the quarantine thing that's been asked about. I understand that for kids that are attending school, but I know we've had some requests and some comments, particularly about those students that have, are participating in extracurricular activities, that, you know, all along, they've been on a different kind of track, not necessarily quarantine track, but we should have a lot more data. And I know there's a number of parents and students that are, maybe this is what's going to be addressed on Wednesday, that they, they, they believe that the state and the governor have relaxed those days, and, and there is a time sensitivity, sensitivity to us making a determination about that. So if that's, is that one of the topics for this coming Wednesday?
Yes, that is exactly what Ms. Bunty was referring to. We do have the option in the state of Ohio of relaxing those quarantine guidelines, but we have to do so in conjunction with our local health department. And so as Ms. Bunty said, they would like to see two weeks' worth of data before we change our student quarantine.
Yeah, I would, I would really encourage us, if we could, we've, we've been giving special dispensations for months and months regarding the extracurricular participation. So I imagine there's a lot of data there. Also, another question, I don't know, I know a couple of months ago, it was talked about needing to do so much more outside and, and what have you, like the trays eating outside or what have you. Didn't know what the status was so far of the kind of quote audit of our facilities that the CPS outside people that network, I know the deputy superintendent's been very involved with that, and I, I didn't know if that's all part of our reasoning, too, for this coming year as well, and whether or not we're experimenting with more things happening outside.
Yes, so in the short term, we are certainly encouraging, you know, lunch can be outside if the school has the facility for that, as well as, you know, outdoor proms or end-of-year celebrations are, are to be outdoors. Long-term, I do know that it is part of the new CPS strategies for, for outdoor education.
That's great, because I, maybe the treasurer knows, but it seems like that could be something that we would be allowed to spend money on, if it's making it safer. And finally, I, I guess this might be an assignment at the end, but I guess it's time for policy or somebody to start to be looking at moving into this coming year, whether or not employees are going to be required to have been vaccinated in order to be employed in the district. I'd rather get that underway or not happening as soon as we can, because it's very controversial. It's going to require a lot of involvement and engagement and thinking, but it's obviously, if people are telling everybody to laminate their COVID cards, we better be thinking about that, and we need to take the appropriate time.
Sounds like an appropriate assignment.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, I'll close. Mr. Lindy, go ahead.
Sarah, thanks very much for the great update, and thank you for your team and to everybody in the administration for helping do the enormous amount of work it took to get us to where we are, and I just want to say genuinely, thank you very much. I had a couple of questions about quarantine, but I think that Ms. Bates's question's covered all of them. The only other thing I had was on, two quick things. Back before the spring break, there was some reference in one of the safety updates about a different approach to testing that is happening now. I just wasn't, it didn't seem like the most pressing question at the time, and if we have a minute, I just wanted to hear a little bit more about what that is, it sounded exciting. And then just so you know, my other question was, and I apologize if anybody else mentioned this, the attendance numbers for students, could you just talk a little bit about how you feel about them? Or are we, don't mean this to be leading, are we happy with where they are? Are they basically what we expected, are they different? Those are my two.
Sure. So the first question is about surveillance testing program that Ms. Bunty and Dr. Margaret Hall are working on with the health department. And so we did have to take a bit of a pause on that now, now that the vaccine has become available for, for 16 and up in Ohio. And so they're working on the vaccine program. But the plan is to begin the surveillance testing pilot in the summer, and again, focusing first on high school, high school students. And again, that is surveillance testing to be able to pick up asymptomatic cases so that they can be isolated very quickly.
Was that children's, who is the partner there?
It's children's and Cincinnati Health Department.
Thank you.
And the other question was about attendance, and I think we were all encouraged because we saw that between, even just between Wednesday and Friday, there were several hundred more kids coming to school on Friday than on Wednesday, and so that was certainly very encouraging, and we are hoping that that will continue to increase.
Okay, so we'll close out the presentation, want to thank, I just want to thank the entire district, I mean, the leadership team, our, our staff at the schools, principals and their teams, and also for the parents, for the confidence that they had in, in the district to feel like they could send their kids back to a safe environment. So we thank parents for that, and to our kids, I'll just say, welcome back. So we look forward to continuing the, the updates on where we stand. Okay, so we're going to move on to hearing the public, and as I know, I was told that we have seven speakers, so I am going to ask the board if it's okay that we go back to the standard three minutes? Well, that, I know, it's, it's three minutes standard. Standard, you know, we, we lowered it when we had the high numbers, the volume, but standard three minutes, since it's only seven people. Are you all okay with that? Okay, you all okay with that? All right. Okay, so we are now at the item on the agenda for hearing the public. Consistent with state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening the video conference to include opportunity for public comment. Each speaker will have three minutes and will direct all comments to the presiding officer. Consistent with the board's bylaws, the board has the ability to limit the hearing of the public on any single issue, and will exercise the right to do so if needed. Once a request to speak has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Provide your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, your topic, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. We appreciate your compliance. Okay, again, each speaker will have three minutes and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your time is up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back through the live stream meeting. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. Okay, we're ready?
Speaker is Steve Simon, followed by Jillian Whitaker, followed by Yusuf Manir. Go ahead, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, President Jones, hopefully you can see me and hear me. It's been an exciting week, last week and the week ahead to finally have these kids in school. I am a Walnut Hills parent, so this is, tomorrow will mark the first time that my son is back in school for over a year, and I thank the members of the board who voted last month to make that happen, and of course, thank you to the district leadership. Your, your last discussion about quarantining is the reason that I'm here. I was very concerned to learn that CPS was not following what I thought was the default position that the state of Ohio issued three months ago, that based on the very low transmission of the virus in school where kids are masked, protocols are being followed, that they no longer instituted the quarantining for kids who are simply in close contact with a student who tested positive. You can imagine this came as quite a surprise to certain Walnut parents who I learned last week, after finally being back in school for two days, learned that because they were close contact, would now be back to remote learning for two weeks. And oh, by the way, now you can't practice with your sports team for two weeks. Given that these kids will only get eight weeks at most in school this year, and we're very grateful for it, to lose two weeks is a lot. And we would hope that the district, and I'm very glad to learn that there's this critical meeting on Wednesday, and so I am learning, too, that there's, needs to be input from the local health department. I certainly hope that you, you know, as you make this decision, make the students' well-being a priority, that these kids are so excited to be back in school, that they should only be sent to remote and quarantined only if it's really warranted, and it doesn't seem like it is warranted, given what we know about the virus. So thank you again for your support of these kids. Here's to a wonderful fourth quarter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker is Jillian Whitaker, followed by Yusuf Manir, followed by Jason Banks.
Hi, this is Jillian Whitaker, a Walnut Hills, COVIA, and Dater students. I don't think that we know what we know about the virus, even though that's what Steve thinks. We have just learned that many schools in Europe are shutting down again because students are transmitting the virus and the variants at much higher rates now. I'm really concerned to hear about this quarantine change that everyone is considering, especially because students are not even three feet apart. I have seen pictures, I have screen-captured pictures from Walnut Hills where science students are sitting at the same table in the whole classroom. Please do not lead the parents to believe that there is at least three feet of space, because not in any school, in no school is there three feet of space. And it's really upsetting to just keep hearing it repeated over and over again, and hear that guidelines are being followed at 98% when the kids are sitting directly next to each other. I just, I don't understand how we're getting so many backpats when it's not happening. I'm also really curious, and this is kind of off topic, why no one has held Melanie Bates responsible for her remarks yet. Ben Lindy, you brought it up once, and then it just went by the wayside. I do think that someone needs to have a direct discussion with her about the way that she is treating the students and staff in her schools. My dogs are crazy. The last thing is equity. There's no equity in this school year. One of my kids has only had 125 hours of instruction this year, while another one has had 845. And when I wrote to the district about it, Jeremy Bull, he said, oh, sorry, there's really no standard this year because of COVID, so we don't have to hit in a certain number of instructional hours. But I don't understand how one kid in my own house can have 700 hours more than another. Also, now one of my kids is no longer allowed to remain remote in her school because Walnut Hills has taken all the bandwidth away from them, because they couldn't be bothered to purchase more. I'm glad that my Walnut kid can stay remote, but I would have preferred for all of my kids to stay remote, especially for the one who's been able to stream all year long. There's a lot going on that's not being talked about, and I don't think it's fair to the families and to the students. People need to be able to make decisions based on the truth and not based on what everyone says is happening. Thank you for your time.
Is Yusuf Manir, followed by Jason Banks, followed by Owen DeRico. Go ahead, Mr. Manir.
Hello, my name is Yusuf, and I am the president of Young Activist Coalition. I am a senior at Walnut Hills High School, and I am a student of CPS who was threatened with arrest by an SRO at CPS schools. And I am here today because of that experience and because of the lived experience of so many other students who have, who have either been CPS students or are still CPS students. We have four very simple demands. One, we want the immediate end of school policing, including SROs and police equipment. Two, we want to replace zero-tolerance policies with restorative justice practices. Three, we want to clarify reporting channels for prohibited behavior, including staff actions, and apply restorative practices to all prohibited, uh, rule infractions. Four, we want to create a community implementation board to oversee the enactment of this policy. Now I want to get in a little bit into the why. 273 arrests by SROs every single school year. That's 273 kids who have to live with the trauma of being arrested in the one place that they were supposed to be safe, in your schools. That is two students every single school day that have their futures stolen and, and have lost any opportunity at, at a good life, at a better life that CPS claims to promise. That is two students, that could have been me, that is two students that could have been my friends, that is two students that could have been my family. No matter how much these SROs might care about these kids, and they very well might, at the end of the day, their job is to arrest kids who they perceive to be violating the law. And we know what demographic of kids the law is disproportionately applied to, black and disabled kids. We need their removal and their replacement with something new, something better. With schools reopening, DPS has a very opportune chance to radically transform itself to be truly anti-racist, to show the entire country what schools can and should be. Do not miss that chance. We will not let you miss that chance. I want to remind board members Bowers, Messer, and Lindy that we currently have open invitations to meet with you all to talk and have conversations about data directly from CPD. I also want to request that the YAC leadership team be allowed to present to the Health and Safety Committee because we have local data from CPS, from CPD, and data from all over the country about SRO programs, and specifically about CPS's SRO program that the district, per Daniel Hoying, does not have. We have data that CPS does not have and that you need. It is data that you cannot make an informed decision about SROs.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jason Banks, followed by Owen DeRico, followed by Ruth Boner. Go ahead, Mr. Banks.
Good evening. My name's Jason Banks. I've been a teacher in CPS for 20 years. I teach at Campbell Montessori High School, Chomp Chomp. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I know there are a lot of important issues that the board has to deal with right now, but this issue is important to me and to my family. For decades, CPS had a policy that children of employees who lived outside of the district would be counted as in-district students. This was a longstanding policy, one I was counting on when we moved just outside of the district. But then, a few years after we moved, DPS switched to open enrollment and changed the policy. Now, my children who had been attending CPS for years are no longer counted as in-district. Four years ago, when the board changed this policy, I petitioned the board to grandfather families like mine into the old policy. At the time, I thought the board agreed, but when I tried to enroll one of my children into her high school this spring, I was denied because she was considered to be out of district, and I was shown Board Policy 5113, which has no mention of families like mine. Tonight, I'm asking you to consider adding one line to Board Policy 5113, something like, "Employees who live outside of the district but had a child enrolled in CPS prior to 2016 will be permitted to count their children as in-district students." With this one sentence, families like mine will be permitted to continue under the policy that they started with. It would be devastating for us to have to choose between the home we built for our children and the schools our children love. Thank you. Thank you.
Is Owen Durico, followed by Ruth DeBono, followed by CFT President Julie Sull. Go ahead, Mr. Durico.
Hello, Board. My name is Owen Durico. I am a sophomore at Walnut Hills High School and I'm speaking on behalf, as always, of the Young Activists Coalition. Now, my colleague Yusuf Manir has already informed you tonight of the frightening statistics relating to SRO present within your school district. As a matter of fact, you have been informed repeatedly by myself, by Yusuf, and by numerous students of these facts over the past year. And so, I'm not going to sit here and just tell you those statistics again. You know them. We've told you. It's a responsibility to know them. So instead, I'd like to pose a question to you. What are you going to do about it? I do not believe that you can sit here in front of me, in front of my peers, and in front of your constituents and tell us that the criminalization of two students per day is acceptable. It isn't. You know it isn't. And if you think it is, then say so in front of all of us right now. We are past the point of deciding whether or not we have to act on this issue. We have to act. It's evident to seemingly everyone, but several members of this board. We need to enter into an open and honest conversation about what we are going to do to make our schools a safe environment for the students that are learning in them, a bare minimum requirement of any learning institution. As Yusuf said, several of you still have yet to actually engage in any dialogue concerning this issue with the Young Activists Coalition. And we have repeatedly been denied a serious position at the table in this conversation. We would like to demand not only the removal of SROs from Cincinnati Public Schools, but in order to get there, we need to be willing to have an honest conversation about this issue, which I don't believe we've had yet.
Next speaker.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruth DeBono, followed by CFT President Julie Sull. Go ahead, Ms. DeBono.
Hi, I'm Ruth DeBono. I'm a junior at Walnut Hills High School and I'm also here with the Young Activist Coalition. Sitting outside of my school and instead of being excited to meet new friends and start a new day at my very, at my new high school, I was scared because of the power that I knew they held. Data that we've gone over already shows that the SROs in our schools are not as safe or beneficial to students. The data has shown that, and I'll repeat it again, although you've been told multiple times before, two students a day are arrested on average by the SROs in our school. They have the same exact equipment as a standard BEACOP and with 14 officers floating between schools, visiting on average 2.6 schools, but anywhere from two to seven schools per day, there was no true opportunity for them to form a relationship. By SROs is incredibly harmful and replacing the SRO program with restorative and transformative justice is an opportunity for you to reimagine school discipline and make schools a safer place for marginalized students to learn. Unlike punitive justice, restorative justice does not simply punish children and ignore the harm that that, that the actions caused the community, but seeks to have healing and have build community between students in order to prevent those situations from happening in the future, rather than simply punishing children and moving on, allowing it to happen repetitively, and not truly helping the student and seeing why whatever happened may have happened. These practices are great and when, it is evident that CPD cannot be, they cannot code this with cops in our school. And that's the transformative justice that can truly help our students. CPS does not have the ability to truly hold all these SROs accountable and it is not safe to have them in our schools when we, when we have more information than the school board does and then CPS does, then, then what, we have more information on what CPD is doing. It is necessary that you open, that you enter into an open conversation with us so that we can come to a solution to this problem that I don't think anybody can ignore to make students a safe place, make school a safe place for students.
Thank you.
Our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sull. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Good evening, everyone. So first, I would like to say thank you for adopting the calendar for the 21-22 school year so that families and employees are aware of when school will be opening next year. But what I would really like to talk about is the $224 million of stimulus dollars that the district is receiving. I am hoping that the district is going to make it something that is going to carry over to the future to improve services for our students and this will take some investment. As of this time, I'm not aware that any teachers or principals were consulted to give any input in how these dollars will be spent. Many times, it is the schools who are most knowledgeable of what would be the most valuable programs for students. As you know, teachers have been living in the homes of families for the entire past school year and so they have developed strong relationships with those families. But we must also make sure that we are focusing on recruitment and retention of teachers. This is going to take an authentic investment and a very detailed plan on how this is going to work. As you know, many teachers have taken early retirement, there are people who are leaving the profession, and it is not something that is just happening here in Cincinnati, it's happening nationally. So in order for us to have enough teachers, we're really going to have to make sure that we have real programming in place to support new teachers and provide support to the teachers we already have in order to retain them. At this point, there has not been any true programs that have been developed for that recruitment. Some of the recruitment that has been taking place has been just minimal of advertisements for, to, that we're hiring. Since there's been so much concern and discussion within Cincinnati about how the city is using their funds, I think that it would be important for all of us to see a comprehensive list for CPS and how those dollars will be used. There are many concerns from the schools about the escalation of central office administration and feel that the focus on schools is declining and there needs to be less of a top-down mandate. Each school within CPS is individual and we need to make sure that each individual school has what they need. With the return to the five days, we have continued to have more positive cases with students and luckily, the staff cases are down, but some students are still very worried and concerned due to the lack of social distancing in the schools. One of the things that I've heard from families and from employees is how will employees and families be notified of new cases and what is going to determine a close contact? There has been some discussion about that this evening, but there are still some worries and concerns. The letters going home seem to be sporadic and is there, what really needs to happen now is a robust student testing process because there are kids who have been exposed and within close contact and they're not, those other students are not getting tested. There's still some problems around the testing, bus issues, and also lunches, especially when there are, there's weather that is either cold, snowy, or rainy. Impending, we would like to know what is the criteria going to be? So I heard that there's going to be a one-pager put together for us to do that. And I'm glad that Jason Banks spoke up because at the time when we went to open enrollment, we assumed that our student, our families, because they can be determined as residents, even if they live right outside the district. This is an issue that I've heard with multiple teachers and their families, that they thought that the students weren't going to be able to remain in CPS. I really, all employment has some benefits. If I worked for Delta Airlines, I would get to fly to, on their flights for free. If I worked in a restaurant, I would be able to eat out either at discount or for free. Every single job has some kind of employee perks for the employees of that district and it seems very unfair that employees in our district's own children cannot attend when they're moving to other schools and that, that there's such a delay for them to be able to find out if their kids are going to be able to be included or not included. And I'm not sure if it's just a communication, but principals have said, no, they were told they cannot include any students of families. So I hope that that is something that can be brought back up with the policy committee. There are different people on the board at this time. The situation is different now. We've opened more schools the last few years. I do believe there are seats available and with the worry of students leaving the district, I think that this is a time that the families of your employees should be able to come back to CPS. So thank you and have a good evening. Oh, the other thing, everybody wants to know when you're going to reopen the meetings in person. Maybe you can still do a blended model and have it televised and have the auditorium open. We would, many people want to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Court President Jones?
Yes.
Since there were such few people, if I could address some of the issues and the concerns that were brought up, I think I-
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Since there are so few people to speak, I was able to capture it very quickly and I think I can speak to these concerns as opposed to when there are 40 people speaking, it's hard to necessarily. In terms of the quarantine guidelines, we have to work very closely with our health department. In the event that something were to happen and we did not have our health department in alignment or we weren't in alignment with them, it would be problematic. And so we look forward to Wednesday to see if there are going to be any adjustments made to the quarantining guidelines. In terms of the SROs, we can, we contracted an organization, Cohere, to host parent and student forums to discuss SROs in the schools. We've actually had a presentation on the agenda for quite a few meetings, but they were bumped due to other presentations. So I've asked the Chair, Ms. Bates, of the Health and Safety Committee if that group could come and make a presentation to give information about what our parents and what our students are saying about SROs in the school. And so we look forward to that presentation being made, not by CPS, but by an external group at the upcoming Health and Safety Meeting. I'm going to ask Dan Hoying if he wouldn't mind starting to make his way to the podium. So in terms of employees, students, having a seat within our district, and I want to make sure I'm addressing this, that all the board members can hear this. Our first priority is to make sure that the students who live in the district have a spot within our schools. There are some schools that, as you can imagine, are, have a high enrollment and attendance. And what we don't want to have happen is that people who live outside the district are taking the seats away from families who actually live within the city of Cincinnati and within CPS's footprint. So Dan, would you speak to the policy, please?
That's right. That's the board policy as well as in the collective bargaining agreement. Collective bargaining agreement provides that actually employees who are outside of the district have the first priority after resident families and that would include both employee and non-employee.
So there's the chance that an employee who lives outside the district, their child would get into a school, but it's after we make sure all of the kids who are residents get in first.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. And by the way, Superintendent, you did mention about the quarantine rule early in the presentation, so maybe people didn't hear that, but thank you for repeating it. Okay. All right, moving on, does anybody have any kudos? Mr. Lindy?
Thank you, President Jones. Want to get my notes out? Give me one second. Tonight, for those of you who do not know, we have a Walnut Hills alumnus. I'm going to say his first name, I hope correctly, Makayla Teague, who is playing in the NCAA National Championships. And want to say, have a great game. And I'm on behalf of CPS, proud you're there and hope you win tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for mentioning that. Yeah. Any other kudos? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I have a kudo for CPS and UC for the Hughes Project on Friday. The light, it was kind of like, what is the event that we have? The music hall, but it was similar to that. Yes, it was beautiful and it was wonderful, the collaboration and the art of the students was actually, of Hughes was displayed and put into digital through UC. So they did a great job.
Great, thank you. Any other kudos? Okay, Ms. Bates, retirements?
Yes, I have several retirements from our certificated personnel. We have two teachers who are retiring, Laura Elhassar from Woodbird and Donald E. Stoker from Walnut Hills. From our civil service personnel, Teresa Diesel, Lead Secretary, Denise Montgomery, Paraprofessional, Roberta Morgan, Paraprofessional, Jefferson Reynolds, Custodian, Vicki Rowe, Paraprofessional, and Lovett Woodward, Woodard, I'm sorry, Woodard, Paraprofessional. So we thank these professionals for their service to the district and our children and wish them well in their retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, moving on to board matters, Ms. Bolton, looks like both of these items belong to you.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it, that they've been placed on the agenda. The first one is really an inquiry, kind of hopefully some bit of discussion as a result, if you will, of the federal monies that may or may not be out there available to us, but more particularly because it also has become a campaign issue, I think during the mail primary and city council race regarding monies that the city might be having. And I thought it might be good for maybe administration to give us some sort of whatever great knowledge or limited knowledge that they have regarding availability of federal funds to improve or expand internet access, because I think it is a big issue regarding the internet access deserts, much as we've tried to overcome the preschool deserts and I think it'd be great if either the treasurer or somebody from IT could at least explain what we do know about that kind of money. And to the point that the president mentioned, last meeting, any kinds of, any sort of developing relationship or mutual interest that the city and the district might have regarding internet access.
So I haven't been contacted by the city in terms of their cares funding. I can certainly reach out to them. The only thing I know for sure about the expanded E-rate and expanded eligibility services, but I don't even, I don't even think that's been finalized yet, just hearing rumors. Thank you, Jeremy, for coming to help me out.
So I can add a little detail to that. The FCC and the Universal Services Division that manages E-rate has signaled over the last several months that they're very interested in applying E-rate funds to home internet service that we'd be able to take advantage of. Unfortunately, we have no confirmation at the point. The last update that they provided was on March 19th where they issued a public notice requesting response and comment from the public about how they should manage the money and what they should entitle the money to. But they have been issued $7.1 billion from the American Recovery Plan that they are going to be administering that is supposed to be set aside for broadband. So at this point, we're really just waiting for them to determine the times and who's going to have access and how.
Go ahead.
That is, that's helpful, very helpful and I don't, I try not to make it the practice- And I don't, I try not to make it the the practice that administration, the administration reaches out or engages in any particular discussions that may get ahead of the board, but it, it might not be a bad idea if we're following our end of it and the city has money as well, it'd be, it might be very useful because currently we are, and I think we're still planning on subsidizing as best we can where we have our families that don't have internet access. Uh, so it has to be part of this coming budget if we're going to be having equitable distribution of those resources. So I, I don't know what the will of the board or the expertise from the administration would be, but this would seem to be some area where we could really concentrate some mutual effort if, if the board is interested.
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that I'm uh clear. Um, is the administration being asked to reach out to the administration or reach out to the council?
Let, let me, let me clarify because I did get a call from council. I think your, your suggestion is that we determine how we might have a conversation with them to maybe do some strategic planning and aligning priorities. Um, I would, I think that maybe what we can do is just make an assignment for administration to administration. Um, and uh my conversation with uh the city councilman who I spoke to, um, I think they would be agreeable to that. But they, they did reach out to me and is interested in in partnering, so I would urge um, maybe you can do an assignment at the end for that to happen. Um, also, I don't know if you all received the copy of the document that was presented at the education meeting that Councilmember Sunderman did, that John Jewitt presented. Did you all get a copy of that or did I? Okay. I'll, I'll make sure everybody gets that as well as, I think maybe the Superintendent um may have gotten it. If not, I'll make sure she gets it, just so we can review kind of sort of our experience with them thus far. Maybe some things on there that we might want to reconsider or revisit, but it also may be something new, like, you know, the broadband piece.
I, I, I feel more comfortable making it as specific as we can as an kind of an intro, you know, a, a, a beginning, uh, rather than necessarily big broad, uh, not knowing, but uh at least that could get us started and it certainly would serve them as well as us. I think that'd be great.
Okay. Anything else, Ms. Bolton, on that one?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Next item?
Yes, uh, the next item is just, uh, uh, again, as you know, uh, having seen and read the minutes of the Finance Committee for the last three months, uh, we continue to be concerned on finance about the continuing costs and uh implementation of our transportation system. Uh, it's one of those very, very important issues of equity, considering we do not charge for transportation as such for our families. And the state has put all kinds of parameters around uh our providing services to, as Mr. Hoing likes to call our competitors, so to speak. Um, but I also know that there are and have been, and we've had administration, again, we've said this before, testify in Columbus because there's uh House Bill 110, uh, part of it is about transportation. And there are new parameters about the transportation requirements. And if I could just take about one minute or so to read what we know about this uh House bill and where it may be, requires the uh Education Services Group, the E.S., the ESCs, to work with all districts in their territory with more than 20 community and private school students to create transportation plans. So that's a whole nother player in the planning of transportation. It eliminates, which we don't get anyway, necessarily bus purchase funding, we get some other kinds of subsidy, but little, allows for morning or afternoon counts, extends the deadline for ridership report from October to November. But then, this is when it gets pretty serious, and this has been mentioned before, prohibits districts from transporting K-8 students on mass transit unless the district enters into a contract with the student's school. Allows districts to transport nine through 12 students on mass transit if certain requirements are met. And then adjusts the deadline for community schools to notify that they intend to transport their students, delays it till August 1st. All of those things are going to impact us and how we are implementing uh this very, very complex operational effort, which has been a challenge for at least six years for us. Not just the cost, but the logistics and also trying to figure out how best to deliver that service. And now with the additional issue of not only safety in travel, but also safety in place, uh, I just uh feel very strongly that we need to keep a price of this, but also understand that we cannot necessarily just do what we've done and even merely extend vendor contracts um at this time, but maybe give us a couple more, for several more weeks to figure some more um rules out and some more parameters. This is critical, uh, and hopefully we can somehow benefit, but it's not going to be the same as it was.
So are these, uh, uh, is this topic being discussed in the committee?
It is being discussed, so we've been, and 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 Mr. Johnson's been good about delaying, at least to my knowledge, the uh, just extending the vendor contracts as they are. But we also are not prepared to have an RFI or RFP yet either because of these extenuating circumstances and new controls. So we're sort of in a limbo, but we're probably not ready to merely uh approach it the same way we have.
Okay. So you're just informing us of kind of where things are?
Yes.
You're not necessarily asking for any sort of decision from the board tonight?
No, 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 I'm not. I just, we just need to, we'll keep working through it in finance and we know that um there are very, not only Mr. Johnson, but also a, a number of other folks are working through this. And I know there was a, you know, a large meeting, the, of folks, of principals talking about the transportation issues as well. So we, we know it's important and we just have to keep our, we have to know, we have to keep abreast of it, both Columbus and here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at resolutions now. We're going to move through these pretty quickly, um, but thoroughly. So I'm going to ask Ms. Bowers to present the first resolution.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. I have a resolution committing to offering five-day in-person instruction for the 2021-22 school year. I present this resolution as uh, as such.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms., yes, Mr. Maraski?
Um, I think this is a, a pretty good resolution. I have a few um suggestions for it, um, so amendments. I'm prepared to vote for it, no question. Um, but I, I feel that the title is somewhat misleading because this resolution has written, if folks are looking at the, the same thing I'm looking at, it really is more about a resolution committing to offering educational choice for the 21-22 school year because it discusses in the resolution, five-day in-person, remote instruction, and blended learning. So I just think it might serve us better, it'd be more accurate, um, to change the title would be my first suggestion. Um, I'm prepared to offer a suggestion. It's pretty simple.
Please.
Um, a resolution committing to offering five-day in-person, comma, remote, comma, and blended learning instruction, et cetera, for the 21-22 school year. So essentially the same thing, but take out the comma between five-day and in-person. Five-day in-person, comma, remote, comma, blended learning instruction for the 21-22 school year.
Go ahead.
Um, and then if I may, just a couple more, uh, because I think this is a pretty important resolution. I think it's a big resolution and I think it's a good one. Um, so uh, if, if I may, just a couple other things. I won't actually offer all the suggestions I have because I don't want to be annoying. Um, but just, I, I know, I start now, right? It's too late. Thanks, Ms. Bowers. Um, guilty. In the first whereas, um, at the end, five days per week during the 21-22 school year, um, I would suggest adding, in addition to remote options for families who want it, just simple, direct, um, in addition to remote options for families who want it. And just encompass them all in one big remote, yeah, remote blended, they're all. Um, in the third whereas, I would change the word envisioning to visioning. In the one, two, three, four, five, fifth whereas, um, the strategic plan was pursued during the second year, which it was, very well, but, and I would add after that, but was stymied under the conditions and states required by COVID. Or paused, if you don't like the word stymied, I don't care. But I think it's important to note that we were forced to halt. Not, because the way it reads right now, it, it doesn't actually, I didn't, I didn't understand it. Um, I'm going to skip those. I'm going to skip all my comma and my Oxford comma stuff because that's annoying in English teachery. Um, and I think that's it. So really, just that title, the addition of that uh piece in the first whereas, envisioning to visioning and adding that stymied or paused or whatever word, I don't care, um, in that a fifth one.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we, uh, any, any further discussion? We can make those edits or we can proceed with the vote, but then make those edits. I wrote them down and if we need to check with you, we can do that. Any other comments or discussion about them?
Motion maker can agree or disagree that's, as a secondary, if you will. I, I think those are all good. I just don't like the, I just don't like the word, the word stymied or paused because I, I think it, we need to make the point that indeed we had to go in, go in a different direction or something, but stymied is too negative and paused means we like stop, which I know the administration didn't. They continued to pursue a number of things that they could.
We can find a word that is suitable. Can we do that or we can do that right now if you want to, but, okay. It'll be something very not threatening. How about that? Or not-
It could be, if, oh.
Do it.
The strategic plan was pursued during the second year, 2021, um, but was forced to evolve under the conditions or but evolved, not even forced, but evolved under the conditions and mandates.
That's good.
But evolved under the top conditions and mandates. Okay. Good work. Okay. Any other questions, discussion? Okay. Um, vote, yes? Do you have questions?
I still think that if we say three things in the one stanza, which is, um, what is it, in-person, remote, and blended, it should be up in the first one, too. Don't-
So it should be, it should be all three and the whole time?
The whole way through. Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, Ms. Page?
We're now also using the word concurrent. So do we want to include that?
My, my sugge-, if we're going to make this many changes, my suggestion would be not to put it up for vote tonight. Let's do it and then revisit it.
I worry about concurrent because I think concurrent is a type of remote. And we might not just be concurrent for remote. When we start listing everything, uh, I think we can, and we don't even know to the degree that we do. I think I, I'd, yeah, the, the money piece is, we're using sign language. I, I would, I would beg to differ about adding the concurrent and I would just be inclusive for remote on that. And I think we should vote because it's a huge thing and it does, it, this is the new CPS. I mean, what we are, if I were the Superintendent, I'd be very worried that we're making this kind of commitment. Um, but this is the direction that we've all been going down.
Okay. Well, let, let's just take the vote and we can make the edits, I think, to satisfy folks. So are you all comfortable with that? Okay. Mr. Lindy?
I, I do have one clarifying question before we vote. It can come now. It's now, okay?
Regarding this?
Regarding this.
Yes.
So are, are we saying in this resolution, we're, we're committing to definitely providing in addition to the in-person, remote, regardless of what's true in the public health context? Like it's, um, that, that's my question.
Uh, yeah, we are committing to offering five-day, in-person, remote, and blended learning.
We say we're definitely offering all of those.
Yes.
In 2021 through 2022.
Okay, I, I think I got to abstain from this one. Um, just be, I'm happy to support the majority, but I, I think I'm, I'm fully supportive of the five days. Um, but I, I do think some other schools or districts are making interesting choices about not even offering remote at all uh for next school year. Um, and I'm not saying that, you know, like that's a, that's a, a bridge I'm going to die on, but I'm just saying from what my board, my perspective personally, I'm not 100% ready to say I definitely want us to offer.
Okay. Well, we can put it out. Go ahead.
Yes, I, I, and I think that's an important concept and I think that's why this is a huge issue, huge commitment, is that we are maybe one of the few districts that's going to be willing or able to try to do this. Uh, and I think it is a huge decision, but I don't know the abstention as much as you vote no. I mean, we know you want the five and we know that we are going to be having to make decisions very, very quickly in the next couple or four weeks about remote commitment budget-wise. I mean, I, I just, I, I totally understand what you're saying.
Any suggestions around that, how you want to address this or do we want to put it on, or vote?
I say, can I respond for one second?
Yes.
I mean, I, I would, I would love to hear from just the Superintendent for a second. Like if she says tonight, like, I really think this is important, we got to offer all of them, I'm certainly in, you know, like, and, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's no circumstances under which I wouldn't support it, but you, I, I don't know that we've seen how much it costs or what, what some of the trade-offs are or, and I, I don't particularly feel like I want to lock the administration in to an approach when, when they might have some other ideas about how they want to do things. But if it's helpful to you, uh, to have this resolution passed by us tonight and there's a, a reason for it, I'm, I'm also happy to get on board with that.
Go ahead, Superintendent.
So I will say, as much as we have been, as we've tried to be accommodating for, to all families, we really have said from the very beginning of this school year that it is extremely difficult to do the in-person and the concurrent learning or the streaming. So we've said that from the very beginning, that only from a technology standpoint, an infrastructure standpoint, and the actual teaching uh that has to be um on the part of the teacher and the capacity to do all of this. We've been saying this, quite honestly, since August, that this is extremely difficult and it is um taxing some people um to the point of exhaustion. We do know that there are other districts in which um the school districts have opted not to do this. We know that there are situations in which the teachers have said, we will strike before we will do this. So it may sound relatively simple and uncomplicated to put a camera in the, in the room and a microphone and do streaming or concurrent learning. It is not as simple as that. And so, uh, we have said this from, from August and we have received pushback from the board to try to make this happen. And so we have tried to make this happen, um, in a way that, quite honestly, is not equitable. Uh, the, so we have worked extremely hard moving, moving heaven and earth to make this happen at Walnut Hills because they are in a situation which they had not been in, in-person learning since last school year. And um it is going relatively well, but there are some hiccups to this. Uh, we do also know that there will be a tremendous cost for the board to consider as we talk about ramping this up and building the capacity for the entire district. So honestly, I'm not saying anything different than I haven't been saying since August.
Page?
Well, kind of along those same lines, I'm, I'm comfortable with voting for it, worded the way it is because it doesn't, it's broad enough. It doesn't specify remote instruction at all schools, you know, which isn't going to be possible. I mean, I, I can't imagine that all of our schools are going to be equipped to do that in August, but if some families want that instruction, it's going to be available in the district. Uh, and the possibility- And the possibility of blended learning, that's, that's also broad. But I do think it's really important that parents know right away that we're going to be offering five day in-person instruction for next year and not to delay that anymore. I mean, the magnet school lottery was, that, that, that for today, the results and people need to know, you know? Should I commit or should I go to, you know, another option? So I'm comfortable with the way it's worded. I think that it's worded in a way that, yes, we are going to offer it, but it's not, you know, specific enough that we're committing to something we just can't afford or isn't technologically possible in August.
Okay. You're suggesting with the edits.
With the edits, but yeah, leaving that area, that section as is.
Ms. Bolton and then Mr. Maraski.
Yes, that's why I hesitated a bit regarding concurrent is the, we're going to have to be offering remote. That's now an expectation. And, and I thought we were kind of proceeding in CPS that those would be authentic choices. And the monies that we've heard, we may or may not have. But it would be important to have this sort of resolution in order to help justify the expenditures that the federal government and other entities or grants or private sector might be willing to give us if we have made this remarkable commitment. But I, I do think that we need to have our families know this. And I think we need to, you know, as finance chair, I'm happy to say we won't be spending the 23 to 52 million dollars on concurrent or whatever, or more or less or whatever. But I think this is, is a commitment and yet it is generic and universal enough that says that we are going to be offering our families choice.
Okay, Mr. Maraski then Ms. Bowers?
I was just going to quickly piggyback off Ms. Bates, I agree that families need to know that we are committed to the five days. I would only add that I think we also need to let people know to Ms. Bolton's point that we're willing and able to do the best of our ability to offer remote as well. And to Mr. Lindy's point, I, I don't foresee, none of us have crystal balls, but I, I feel like the entire state of how instruction is delivered is going to evolve from here forward. And we're not going to figure it out next year, but that this remote option for some families has worked extremely well. And districts that are able to offer it in a very personalized fashion, as hard as it is, are the districts that are going to thrive. And so I think it's to Ms. Bates' point, 100%, families need to know, we are going to get your kids in school. But I also think there's, you know, a group of folks that need to know, we're going to try our best together, remote.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, this question is for Board Member Maraski. I am in agreement with the five day weekend person and the possible blended off, are the remote learning where we can. And I think we're transitioning that first semester and then again extending that in second semester next year. But I was, I'm confused about the blended part, I don't remember us discussing the blended for next school year.
It's already, I took that wording directly out of the resolution, it's already in here. Demands for robust and authentic choices among five day in-person remote inspection and learning opportunities. So I, I mean, I assumed that was in there as kind of catch all in the awful case that we do have some terrible scenario as per the CDC director. So, and again, to Ms. Bolton's point, I think it's broad. So I, but I just took it out of the resolution.
Yeah, and I just want to add, this is with the edits, this is a commitment of what we're going to do and it's choice. That's the commitment. We don't have to implement it tonight. We don't have to figure out the nuts and bolts, that's not what we do with these resolutions, so. Okay. So are we ready for the vote? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Bolton, please present the next resolution. This is the calendar, the board meeting schedule.
Board meeting schedule.
A resolution amending the Board of Education's 2021 board meeting schedule. Whereas the Board of Education is determined to reintroduce the Committee of the Whole on certain Wednesdays effective immediately and for the duration of the 2021 calendar year. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adopts the following amended calendar for meetings of the Board of Education.
Thank you. Any, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you, any discussion, Ms. Bates?
And I wanted to raise this, I know that we do this during July and I'm assuming the July meeting is there in case we need a meeting. But, you know, looking at this, we have four meetings in October. So I would like not to add this to the calendar, but just, you know, the, the, the board agrees that if there is not a need for a meeting, if we don't have to vote on contracts or the treasurer's report, that at the discretion of the president, that that meeting can be, can be canceled. We don't have to have meetings just to, just for the sake of having meetings.
Yes, I, let me follow up to that, your comment. For the last, I guess, four or five years, we've always had one month that was four meetings and it's because of the work session. So I don't know if you are considering that as part of the count as a regular meeting, but typically that meeting is structured and formatted very differently because it's, it's our work session, so that would still leave three meetings. But your idea about having discretion to cancel would be fine with me if the board wants to do that.
I think it's fine, we already meet more than any other board in the state of Ohio.
Okay. So we, we will, we can do that. All right, any other discussion?
Madam President, if I could. The Committee of the Whole is literally that, it is according to OSBA and we appreciate staff's work on doing the historical, how it evolved and changed and went other places in our, in our bylaws. But it's when indeed you have a special issue. Indeed, committees of the whole are also any special meeting of the entire board. But generally committees of the whole that are scheduled and arranged and organized usually have a particular theme or a particular big topic, whether it's a search for a new treasurer or whether it's a, you know, strategic plan or in our case, maybe it's the new CPS or what have you. So there's usually, that's, that happens and it's, the idea is that it expedites a discussion and expedites action. So everyone's finding things out at the same time. And invariably, it's a, an opportunity for board to speak with one another, but more particularly for the board to have more meaningful discussions with the administration.
Yes, and I want to, I want to highlight that again, that the intent is to allow or, or support the superintendent, some of the overarching agenda that she has that we need to have full board discussion about. And so, so she should be part of the planning in addition to us. We need to make sure that, that, that's something that she has great input into when we do the meetings.
Yeah, and the major reason we got rid of the Committee of the Whole initially was that if the Committee of the Whole, just like our other committees, you cannot do business or vote. So we needed to have additional business meetings and we may not need that any longer to the level that we once did during the facilities master plan or some of the other hot topics. And it should be known to the Committee of the Whole as a, our tradition is it has a hard stop at 90 minutes.
Sounds good to me, okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Aye.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski, the next resolution?
Thank you, President Jones, I'd like to present a resolution amending board policy 7100, facilities planning. This was one of the policies I addressed in presentation of the minutes, so I will present the resolution.
Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Maraski again?
Yes, thank you, President Jones, I would like to present a resolution amending board policy 7420, hygienic management. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Thank you, a resolution amending board policy 7434, use of tobacco. And I think Mr. Maraski or Chair Maraski described the changes that were made. We added the people and, and groups for which we are responsible in this policy. I present and hope for approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you, Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy, please present the next one.
Thank you, President Jones, this is a resolution amending board policy 7440 on plant security. And I present the resolution as written.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton, the last one.
Thank you, present a motion, resolution if you will, of fiscal year 2020 to 2021, amended appropriations resolution, I present and hope for approval.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Ms. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, superintendent, do you have a report?
The only report that I have is the written superintendent's report, which includes the recommendation.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's revised recommendations?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes?
Discussion?
Yes.
Just if it's possible to, wanted to thank the superintendent for presenting the calendar. And just wanted to just get a couple of things clear if we could. And I don't know if the superintendent or Mr. McDowell, does this fit within the contractual parameters of CFT? And does it meet state standards that are required? I'm, I'm sure it does, but.
Well, Mr. McDowell is coming to the mic, did everybody get a copy of the calendar? Okay.
Good evening, thank you for the question, Ms. Bolton. Yes, so this does go in line with standards, state standards. That was reviewed, we do that with each calendar that we recommend. And as far as the CFT contractor is language, it talks about a calendar committee. In many cases, this calendar and some issues goes above or, or below some of the information that is listed in the collective bargaining.
Thank you, can, can you say where it goes above?
Sure, so in some cases, when administration throughout the past couple of years, there was ideas that we needed in the days. If you remember, we were front loading PD days a couple of years ago. We felt that was necessary and we believe it's still necessary for this upcoming year. However, the committee proposed a calendar that actually spreads those throughout the year because we think it's going to be critically important that we have those opportunities for our staff and administration to be able to get together during this.
And I appreciate that, so there's, there's more professional development that is required by the contract that administration and the committee felt that it was needed.
Correct.
Thank you, and I appreciate the more transparency on the number of days.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
You're very welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call a roll.
Well, I would just like to share the financial news, I have a little update as well. All right. So under the building of the budget, the deadline was Friday and I'm happy to say everybody was compliant. And so the next four Tuesdays, the leadership team's going through our process. Excuse me, and we plan to bring the first part of the information at the, at the Cal meeting on the 14th, I believe it is. Talking about the strategic initiatives, that first scope of cost as we go forward. There was a new CARES Act that was announced on March 10th. CFT president alluded to it earlier, but we received information last Thursday at our treasurer's huddle call that our allocation is being reduced to 204.6, 204 million point six. I don't know why, it just went from a 2.4 multiplier to a 2.2 multiplier. And we will begin on a monthly basis, sharing the, the budget building on the CARES Act as well as the spending on the first couple of grids that we have. I would like to remind everybody that all the CARES grants are there to support COVID health and safety, a loss of prevention, a learning loss or a prevention of the spread of COVID. And so I was interviewed last week by Todd Dykes from Channel 5 because there's this general feeling that we suddenly very rich and we have $300 million sitting in our back pocket. And we don't, we have to spend the money and then get reimbursed, so it can become a cash flow problem if we move too quickly. I also, we also talked about at the end of these grants, there's a huge cliff that comes in terms of you have to be very careful not to spend, use these funds for recurring expenses or they will have to come back to the general fund, we'll be making some very difficult decisions then. Just keep that in, those things in mind. There was a federal infrastructure bill that was announced on March 30th and no information has come out yet. I've got several people looking to see if there's monies set aside for K-12 districts and we'll jump on that as soon as we know. And then the last item was that we did finish the refunding of the 2014 COPs issue and received or will recognize almost $2 million in savings over the next 10 years. So that was a very challenging effort, but successful. So thank you, that ends my report.
Thank you, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Maraski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Inquiries and updates, I have two, Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones, this is probably a question for the treasurer and the superintendent, but I was, I've been reflecting on how helpful and how powerful it felt to have that parent survey information when we were making a decision about whether to go back to five days or not. And I've been, I've been trying to think about, are there other ways to apply that same kind of power and clarity to other things that we do at CPS? And I was, I was curious about the budget process. I'm not, I'm not advocating for anything yet because this is, still feels very new to me. But have, have we done any kind of, you know, soliciting parent feedback or parent surveying around like key budget priorities? Is that something we've ever done before?
We have in the past had parent sessions out at schools. It's mostly surrounding what don't you want us to cut because we're trying to balance a budget? In recent years, because the majority of the budgets are driven by the either strategic plan initiatives that were very embedded in the community engagement or through collective bargaining agreement formulas on staffing. Most of the input that comes from the school level is through the ILT and the LSDNC rather than a broader, because every school has their own program and they have their own needs and considerations. We don't do a broad parent input. We do have parents that. parent input. We do have parents that sit on the Budget Commission and certainly open to ideas on how to better engage the public in the process, but usually they're not really interested until we're cutting.
I appreciate that context. And I think I may just want to think about it a little bit more, and I might follow up individually, but I appreciate it.
All right. I did want to mention that we still have, we have three schools that have not been assigned a person for graduations, and we have one board member who hasn't responded. So if you, and you know, you know, if you haven't responded, you need to contact Phyllis or Pat and let them know that there are three high schools. And some board members have three schools already, three schools or programs. So if you, you may be asked to pick up a third one, and, you know, so contact Phyllis about that. And we need to get that resolved as soon as possible. Okay, so that's, go ahead.
I just had an inquiry for administration, and it doesn't necessarily have to be answered tonight, or it could be. I had never thought of this, and a number of families that I work with in the community have brought it up individually, so it seemed like something to bring up here. Maybe y'all hadn't thought of it. I don't know. I feel kind of embarrassed I didn't think about it, but a few families have brought up, their families, and I work with all families in pretty precarious financial situations, oftentimes, not all, but oftentimes, they brought up the question of whether or not fees for certain things would be waived in the fall. And I mean, I see, I see, I see why that would be a challenge for us. I see also why it's a challenge for those families. So I didn't know if the conversations we're having, if they are, that's great. If they're not, I wanted to put it out there. You know, and I certainly don't have any suggestions for what that looks like as far as you don't have to pay and you do. I know how this is complicated, but it did seem like a worthy thing to just sort of put on people's radar. And then maybe we could talk about it another time or so, but it's starting to come up just more and more people that have been impacted by the COVID piece on their finances.
Yeah. I don't know if you're sort of addressing that to administration, or if you want it as a committee. Oh, did you want to comment? You don't have to. I'm just asking. I guess I'm thinking it might go to the committee or something.
Or it could be. I mean, I could put it in student achievement. Seems like a logical place for it.
Go ahead.
Was the inquiry about next school year or this school year?
Next school year.
Because I'm thinking of that conversation for this school year also.
Potentially. I was talking out for next school year.
I know, but I mean, okay, all right.
All right, well, I'll give an assignment.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify something. When I spoke about the City Council piece, it was council member, because it's not a secret. So Councilmember Brad Lance, who I spoke with, and actually, the suggestions were a little broader. We, there are a number of ways, and this is in response, Ms. Bolton, to your question about should it be administration to administration or elected official to elected official. I think we can decide that. I mean, it makes sense to me that administration to administration would do that, because too many hands in the pot makes the, kind of, you know, it gets messy. So I would suggest that, but I do think it might be, it could be just as important just if we stayed in touch, because I imagine that each council member may have their own thoughts, so they may call individual board members about it, but we need to make sure that we communicate with the Superintendent around that so that we're not having seven different agendas going on. So that, I just wanted to make sure people knew that. And then, you know, or there could even be a strategic subgroup. I don't, I don't really care. My preference would be Superintendent to the City Man.
I agree.
Okay. All right. Any assignments?
I have an inquiry.
Yes. Oh, just one more inquiry.
One more, I'm sorry. Inquiry, I know we've mentioned this a few times, and I didn't know what the status, and maybe it goes back to administration, or administration can brief us, or it goes to student achievement. I know we've had a number of inquiries from families regarding the results of the Walnut entrance tests. And under the circumstances of COVID and the testing results, I didn't know where the administration was, and it's critical for families to know. I didn't know if, I know we've all talked about it or mentioned it, I didn't know where the administration was, or if it needs to go back to student achievement, or if the administration has said, no, we're not going to change.
Okay. So the plan is for the administration to bring something to the Student Achievement Committee in the form of an adjustment.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any, any more inquiries?
Mr. Mott, if you have anything else to add, though, since you're already down here, please feel free. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any additional inquiries and updates? Assignments? Mr. Morosky?
I have three. The first, I will assign to Policy Committee, and that is, I know we got a response from the Superintendent, but if Mr. Hoyne could add to our sort of standard review, I'd be interested in just learning more about that 5113 that Mr. Banks addressed about the teachers and the enrollment. I understand, I think I understand the issues, but I just, I could maybe talk more about that, that grandfathering idea. That's cool. So that's for Policy. The second, for Health and Safety. And I probably should have brought this up, Ms. Bates, when we were talking about your minutes, because I thought the minutes were awesome. And I appreciate Mr. Messer bringing up the SRO part. So I would just like to offer, and again, I could have done this before, but I'm going to do it now, I would just like to offer something I think that's interesting, you know, after looking at the MOU, which I had assigned at the last board meeting, something that's interesting to me about the partnership with the Police Department is our relinquishing of oversight of the program. We, it doesn't appear we have a tremendous amount of oversight, i.e. records, really. I don't believe we have records of what these arrests are about or what the interactions with the cops are about, so when they have the conferences that I talked about last time. And if we do, that's great, but maybe y'all could find that out for us. And then if we don't, I mean, I would just offer, regardless of how I feel about the program, I just feel like that could open us up to some kind of liability if we don't know what's going on. So I would just offer that piece. And then, but again, I'm glad y'all are taking it on. I think it's the appropriate place for it. Also, plug for the YAC, if they are ever able to present, I do think they have some solid data, but y'all is calling online. And then third, to student achievement, we'll offer up the piece about fees for next school year and what that might look like. I feel bad, Finance, I'm leaving you out. I don't have anything for you, but...
Feel free. We had three meetings last month. We're on Friday War.
Okay. Any other, Ms. Bates?
Yes, I want to assign to the Health and Safety Committee some report from Transportation on the recurring issues that we're having with First Student. And this goes back to some interaction that particularly Mr. Messer has had, and he's not here today to discuss this. I've just been seeing it, but it's been on, you know, a kind of a private social media group that both of us are part of, because it's a neighborhood kind of thing. And there are some serious issues with, like, kindergarteners being on buses for an hour past the time they should, should have been dropped off. And it seems to be, from the comments, recurring, not just a first day of school thing. Also, which also vary, and we've heard this time and time and time again, that parents are not able to get in touch with the vendor to make the corrections or to find out where their kids are. And we don't do the tracking anymore. And I, and it's, it's just an ongoing issue we've had with First Student, and I believe that it's time that the Board begin to hold this vendor accountable. So I would like to make the assignment to Health and Safety, that the Transportation Director respond and provide us with the plans to truly make changes so that our families feel safe about putting their children on our, in particular, the yellow buses. And that seems to be the root of the complaint, and also the communication issues that have been ongoing.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
I would just react to that. I think it's, it's fine, but I, if it's along safety issues, because transportation has traditionally been a part of the, and it is in the bylaws, a finance issue to review the operation. So I'm cool and be happy to participate in that meeting. But I, again, we have some major issues that are continuing to occur. So I applaud that. I hope, I hope it can be resolved.
And kind of to respond, I, my first inclination was to put it in finance, but I do believe this is a safety issue. And I'm on both, so I would be involved in either. But I do think it's better placed in Health and Safety if that's the role of the Board.
Thank you. Yes. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I think we made the formal assignment to the administration to reach out to the city administration about a specific issue or other areas where we interface. Is that correct, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have just an assignment to Policy, if it suits the Board, for a policy in General Counsel or Assistant Counsel, to begin to look into the possibility of requiring employees to, for this coming school year, be vaccinated in order to be employed.
Okay. Any additional assignments? Last call. Okay. Thank you. Having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Here, let me give this to you guys.